Call to order the regular meeting of the town council November 12th, 2024. We'll start with the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Please stand if you're.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the hope with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on our agenda is proclamations and presentations of which we have none. Item number five is public petitions, communications and public participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. Would like to speak, we'd ask you to come up to the table if you're able and give us your name and address if you're in the room. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine and we'll alternate between the two. So we'll start with the room. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Anyone online? Sean, thank you.
Hello, town council. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, town council. Sean Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. I wanted to come here tonight and acknowledge the fact that 168 Mountain Spring Road now has potable water per the health district. In addition to this, Scott and the Public Works team deserve a big shout out as his team quickly responded and cleaned up the exterior part of the property very well, once it was made available to him. Thank you very much for all the work that went into making this occur. In any case, in any ca- in case any of you have not noticed, my property is already on the market. As I've spoken about previously, my intention to sell. We are nearing the end of the journey together and my hope is that we can continue to work towards a positive outcome for all interested parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Good evening. Devin Stegan, 689 Commonwealth State Road. Just a quick question. As a person you check earlier this year, my recollection was your committee mission, whatever your subcommittee is called on ethics and put together a new code for some revisions. I'm sorry, I know you can't answer now, so maybe in seven A or in the one later in the meeting, you could maybe address that, okay? That's fine. I understand. My recollection was your, what are they called? Committees or whatever your things are here. That you had met and you had made some changes to the ethics code that everyone had agreed to at least on your committee. And nothing ever happened as a result of that. And I was just curious. Now, I know you can't answer me, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, I honestly.
Okay.
Why am I not on an ethics committee to celebrate here? I'm not on a ethics committee. I don't know, maybe.
Who's on the ethics?
There's an independent ethics committee of which there is no town council liaison, I think. Might be able to answer your question.
I can offer an answer.
Sure.
That I know. Um, there's an ethics committee made up of three presidents in town.
Okay.
They had some conversation about changing some things regarding filing a complaint.
Okay.
They met, they did some work on that. Unfortunately, one of the members had to step down due to the job situation. They have decided to table that at this moment. The only change that was made is when you go on the website to file an ethics complaint, they've added name and address, which was not there prior to.
That'll be all.
That's the only change that's been made. That's all.
I apologize. I'm gonna have to go back to some video tapes because I have no idea where that came from. And I guess just other one quick thing. About, I think, a weekend before last, a pickup truck blew through the sign at the the island that's like kind of right in front of our house and took the sign off at the knees. Someone had put it, you know, moved it from the street onto the property. We had, I'd called the police, state police, to tell them that it happened. And they said that they were going to communicate to the town about the sign and what had happened in picking the sign up. And today I proceeded to move the sign off the lawn and put it on the island itself laying down. Okay, so my guess is whoever was driving that big pickup truck didn't call it in. And so that's, that's resting there. Whether or not another sign belongs up there is another thing because it doesn't seem to necessarily matter, but did want to bring it to your attention. All right? And thank you very much and thank you very much too.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else? Here. Not seeing anyone else interested in speaking. We'll move on to item six, which is public hearing items of which we have none. Item seven A is reports of board and committees responsible to the.
You can, you can do.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll keep it short because we're gonna talk about ARPA and A1, but ARPA did meet since the last council meeting. It was a couple of weeks ago since, it's been a few weeks since we had a council meeting. We voted on a number of recommendations which we discussed in item eight one.
If I can just add a sent, I cannot get it to these over the minutes. Last night, yesterday, sent everybody a breakout of how the money was spent, which when you look at it, it's pretty impressive. I think we hit almost everything in town, which was great. I say asterisk the hope safety stuff because we still got a vote on it and then right before this meeting, I sent everything that Lisa kindly did just to give us an idea on how much savings we made on all the decisions through ARPA for the last few years in the town council, town council made. So I think it was what over a million dollars in interest over eighteen years.
And did that on eighteen years.
Eighteen years, which is but so I think that I just want to really share that and go over everything to this. So if you have any questions for those numbers, obviously we're all here and Lisa's here. Do you have any particular questions for Lisa? Yeah, so. Yeah, I'll go on that and go. So obviously we have successful, we've been cutting a few weeks ago, a few council members were there, which was great. I thought it was a decent turnout. Beautiful day. So we have a meeting upcoming to go over some things. The agenda items are still being worked out. So that's in another week. Let me see. Eighteenth, yeah, I had, I don't know if it'll be on that agenda, but I did ask Megan if we could just have like an update for like station four forty or one forty, what we might be seeing when we might be starting that. And then Megan today has something else that she's gonna put on, so I don't know that I don't have much. And I want to add for the firehouse, it actually was the day, the next day that fire station was used for mutual aid for a fire over in Coventry. I think it's actually been used twice. So we don't break it in. Great Brian, was it one?
It's broken. No, no, it's been more than that.
Okay.
You know, we hear the sirens, but yes, it, there's apparatus and they're working, so they're doing great.
Yeah, so it's awesome. It's a beautiful station. Members that couldn't make it or residents here, I'm sure they'll be more than willing to give you a quick tour. It's, I don't know what you think.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
First time being there. Jacob, you've been there. Joe, anyways, that's all I have, Katie.
I can give a quick roadsaw task force update. I know that meetings between the town and the state permanent, deep, sorry, the state deep, DPH, Eastern Highland Health are ongoing. He seems pretty satisfied with the status of 168 Mountain Spring. And I do want to express, extend my thanks and thank the thanks of the council for all the efforts that went into resolving 168 Mountain Spring. There are initial conversations are happening about the next steps for vineyards as well as the hill top neighborhood. On the next steps there. So those, these conversations are ongoing. I think DPH, Deep and Eastern Highland Health are really doing a good job of working together with the town on distribution of tasks, who's doing what. But we do have some additional testing coming up for some of our residents as well as the potential plan of action for vineyards, which we are now waiting for. Their piece of that, so we continue to be in contact with them on a very regular basis. All right, we can go on to seven B now, which is reports of town council liaisons.
I was gonna, the only one I have is land acquisition. I was gonna defer to Council of Moran on that one because I know it gives more comprehensive account. Other than that, I have no other meetings.
Okay.
Water commission was canceled. The meeting was canceled again and I was unable to attend the agriculture commission. So what I do, Brian, in your report, you mentioned water, some, some status about line or public something like that.
Okay.
The November economic development commission meeting was canceled, so no update.
Thank you. So the rec, advisory board meeting was a couple of weeks ago. Quick meeting, I think I've already reported this, though it can't build up extremely fast due to the flash shield for the huge amount of money, which was great. You're, you aren't cool. The pickleball court has started. Pickleball court there. And then there was some discussion again on the celebrate Tallinn. We had a lot of questions to Bruce if it was good to have the two merge together and the wonder and maybe now do a separate Tallinn in the spring. So we have another event to offer the community. So they've mentioned that a couple of times. So I don't know, Brian, if you want to redock Bruce or you want to come to one of those meetings and discuss or something. But they have brought it up. That's the chair that's brought it up a couple of times on that committee.
Okay.
That's really all I have.
Yeah, I, the last planning zoning commission meeting was October 28th. I can't remember if that was before or after this, our last meeting. But largely they've been talking about any potential changes to home occupation regulations in particular. It's factors around how many commercial vehicles, trucks should be allowed to be parked in or as a minimum. And so I believe that conversation is still ongoing. I think that's all from there. Land acquisition advisory committee met since our last meeting. I, I think Brian will mention, I think we're tabling the Tallinn Marsh for tonight, just I think for our attorney to give this some. And then there was nothing that we recommended to bring before council. Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, so yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you. The historic district commission has a scheduled meeting for next week, I think. Not sure if that meeting is happening or not. I come and follow in all the emails that have gone after it. But there is some COA activity. It looks like happening on in those properties. But if they're meeting next week, that will be there. We shall move on to item seven, which is actually it's a new business. Eight point one is consideration of a resolution for ARPA subcommittee funding use recommendation for a total of thirty thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you, Chair. The ARPA subcommittee met on the 24th. We discussed many things. And one of the, at the top of the list, you see the replacement of door locks at Fire 340. Basically, they're, they're key locks. And you know, there's this keys have been the way we've opened the doors here for forever. And there's keys everywhere and we need to get to a professional place where we can professionally monitor who comes and goes in our buildings. We'd like to get all our fire buildings and our DPW down the road to be under a key FOB system. This is three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for just station three forty. But you'll see also on there twenty thousand for the fire training center and station two forty to be on the same FOB system. When we move towards the repairs of one forty and four forty with the money that we have in the building budget, we will do those locks with the key FOBs as well. So this will bridges to, we have the, so that we, we know who's coming and going with these new fire with, with millions and millions, millions and apparatus in these, these buildings, it behooves us to control who comes and goes and to know, know who came and went. And this is obviously where everyone in security is going. It's a public safety building. I, it's obviously important for us to maintain security there. The other stuff, a power washer, some cabinets and airline hoses are just a basic functional items, small functional items for station three forty.
Yes. No, so the committee looked into this and had a pretty good discussion last month about this recommendation. Yeah, firehouse committee did and then. And I'll just add that, you know, the ARPA committee had a desire to see, you know, different departments all get, you know, some, some funds from, from the ARPA act. And additionally, we looked and tried to figure out what made sense in each department. So these are all items that would have either had to be going to the capital plan or would have had to come out of the firehouse budget, which is funded. So it's, I would recommend that the council record.
Yeah, great. Could just follow up. Thank you, Brian, for the quick overview. We got a lot of requests for our funding. At the very end, it was like everything. So like Jacob just said, we really want to try split it up in R C safety, like Brian said, people going in with millions of dollars of apparatus, the way to go. I also just want to say that the fire department also did put some other items on there that we said no to. So because it was either too much or we just didn't have enough time to learn more about it before the finalization, so. I think this is, I hope the council approves these four things.
Yeah. Any questions?
Just a quick question on the FOB, just because I would spend some of it. Did you mention the other fire stations, one forty and three, or the other fire stations?
Yes.
Where's the funding for load for the FOBs from? Is that coming out of those project funds or?
Yeah, so, so this is what we're asking for tonight is three forty and two forty in the training center.
Yep.
And then we, the money left over from this project to include the million dollars that we got from the state will in, when we redo the improvements for those buildings, we'll make sure the same key FOB system is included in that.
Okay. And but the FOB system isn't necessary as opposed to the key system for enhanced security? Is that sort of?
Sure. Yeah, enhanced security from them. We'll be able to know who comes and goes and if we have a volunteer fireman that quits or goes rogue or something like that. Then we ask them for their key back and, you know, he tells us to go pound sand. We can, this way here, we can, we can just cut, cut off their access to everything. So it's just a professional, basic security thing that we should technically have. I've been my estimation on all buildings. We'll move to that as the future moves.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, so is, do you have, do you have anyone on the FOB?
No.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
They had a jaw drop when we saw it. Because that's just these two. If you looked at all of them, it's like why over forty thousand dollars?
I have a question. These items that we're being asked to consider today as far as I could tell are not on our current capital plan. And so my general question is, why are we spending thirty thousand dollars on new items for the town when we do have a number of planned purchases that will, we will have to go out to FOB for?
So that, that's what was my original look, obviously all capital items. But the security one, which is, you know, I could have waved in the other smaller items under that. But the security stuff, I would eventually ask John to, you know, can we secure up your building, please? It's a public safety thing and he would have said, I don't, you know, give me the money. So we would have had that on a capital plan at some point, as I would expect with DPW down the road. As remember, we did cameras for the DPWs when we were moving catalytic converters out here. So something that would have been on the plan, again, it is a one-time expense for the bulk of this, the twenty-three thousand, I'm sorry. Yeah, twenty-three thousand and change for the security. So it's a one-time expense and, and everything else is moving forward as this building. I'll have an update on that in the capital report, which is out of our depth.
I can understand. It's just not much money either, a lot of the capital items. Lisa spent a lot of time depending on what category there was. There was just not enough money.
We called.
Yeah, I mean, we did.
Is there then a motion to approve the resolution for item eight point one?
So moved.
By Councilor Mari. Is there a second? Sorry. Is there any discussion, questions before we go? Voice call on this. All of you, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item eight point two, which is consideration of a resolution to approve a purchase and sale agreement for the Tallinn Marsh.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask council to table this in moving towards the finalization of said agreement. We have free request the attorney. We had hoped to have it in by today. We did not. Now, that's not a fault. That is our attorney reaching out to the seller's attorney. The seller attorney has not gotten those documents back. We waited as long as we could. They came up this afternoon at four thirty and said we don't have it. We need to table.
Okay. All right. To method of put the purchase in any, there's no issues. Section will move on to item eight point three. That's agreements to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Councilor Shaden?
Yeah, I can thank you for that. Appreciate Councilor Shaden taking those. I usually try to, yeah, talk to it, but I don't say, I think.
Darn it, I wouldn't have hit for six.
Remember, I can't remember the full names of both individuals that we're, we're dealing with here.
So the, the recommendation before us is the appointment of Tracy Herbert, who is currently an alternate to a regular member. And then the reappointment of Anne Deegan to be an alternate member.
Bottom of page nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that. I only have. That's why I was trying to find. But that basically summed it up. I mean, that's basically all we're reading.
And that's your recommendations?
Yes. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? We could move forward with a motion to keep the mentioned appointments of Tracy Herbert from an alternate to a regular member and a reappointment of Anne Deegan as an alternate member. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Butler. Is there any further discussion? All of you, please, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. So we will move on to item nine, which is all business of which we have none. Item ten is recorded at the time.
Thank you so much. I'd like to start with the elections and thank all the people that were involved in this very unique election on so many levels. First with the early voting, which was a great success here in town and made the polls a lot easier. I thank you, I thank Mr. Wyman and Mr. Bach. We know for certain that, that this may be Mr. Bach's or Mr. Wyman's last presidential election, so I, I thank him so much. It was tireless and just, just a crazy two weeks. I thank Kathy, our clerk, for the extra hours that she put in. I will work to find ways to make sure that she's, she's taken care of for the, the, so many after hours that she put here in town. All the people that showed up to work at the polls as well, I thank them. There was just so many curveballs. In looking at what happened, same-day voter registration, we got hammered in that it was probably three to four times what we had estimated it to be. And that's what really slowed it in the works on election night, is all you remember how long it took to get the results back. It was the, it's the same-day voter registration that, that really slowed things up. You can imagine we're hearing Mansfield with UConn, New Haven with Yale, the same-day voter registration was in the thousands. And, and obviously they got slammed as well. So we at least will be able to predict hopefully for the next presidential and, and the other elections and it gave us a lot of good data that we'll be able to use to prepare and budget. While we're on budget, it costs a lot more than we thought. We got some grant money. But we're still a little bit short, but again, we'll be able to work through that. And next year, hopefully have the exact budget, but it'll be an increase coming out of the registrar's preparing for budget season, I would, I would imagine. Given the early voting and success thereof.
What is the town's percentage of voting, or registered voters, do you recall?
Oh, it was just around fifty percent. I want to say just over fifty. With, with absentee, it was definitely over fifty. Yep, yep. The number of voters went up a lot. The percentage didn't necessarily go up, but that's because so many people registered that to, to, of new voters, so it really messed the numbers up.
So that was early voting and absentee.
Yeah, not that, that, yeah, that didn't count same-day registration. It was also a lot of new people as well. But, but man, Mr. Wyman and Mr. Bach did such a great job of handling these curveballs that were just new and no one knew how they were going to go. We're just really lucky and the assistants did well too. April and Brenda did a great job too. So very, very, very lucky to have. Animal control. Our building will, in, in four years or so, will be non-compliant with the state regulations. It's in our capital plan to build a new building. That is the worst-case scenario that we have to build it ourselves and pay for it. I'm exploring with the, the help of Megan Masa, our grantperson, money to build that and also regionalize our animal control. We are currently in met today, not our first meeting by any stretch, with Wellington, Stafford and Ashford on regionalizing at least for now our staffing and then moving towards all of us having a shared animal control facility. Again, just, it's, it's, it is a lot of work and I would be lost without Megan helping me through this. So I thank Megan, but we are very engaged. We're working closely with CROG, working through some legal issues and working towards getting a grant that'll hopefully show some savings. But again, worst-case scenario, we stay as we are as staffing and we got a plan in to our, our planning down the road for a new facility, which in that, you know, my estimate would be around a million dollars or so. There is a lot that goes into an animal control facility and you can imagine all the rules and safeguards that have to be in place in this day and age. So it's significant expense in building these buildings. It's not as easy as you would think. In a great capital budget meeting today with Walt Willett and Pete, we talked about the, the field, the turf field and the best way to maintain it as we move towards replacing that down the road. And we look towards the best practices and what we can do with DPW in the school to make sure that field lasts as long as we can. We are not looking for a new field. We are looking to refurbish, but even refurb costs in the millions. We also had a good discussion about the tennis courts up on Old Castle and the replacement thereof. Some of the things we talked about was material, concrete versus asphalt, size of it, six courts now. And how many courts do we need or should have and working with. Um, and how many courts do we need or should have and working with the, the um athletic director. Um, and looking at CIAC and, and um or CAIC, whatever it is, at different standards. Bruce has been helping with that as well. Uh, but it was a, a good meeting and a positive meeting on our end. The Parks Garage uh is, it's in a place where we want it to be, um thankfully. And I, again, I thank Megan uh for coming out of the bullpen and, and. Uh, stepping in and helping uh with this. We are using um basically uh Gordian again, who should use to so many projects where they come in and, and we believe we will have a month to spare. Um, when all is said and done. So we are very close to finalization. In order to save money, to get it into the threshold that we needed, um Scott is, Scott and his department are gonna do a lot of things to include paving ourselves, knock the building down, get rid of it ourselves, uh a lot of stuff like that. We cut back on every corner we could find to include um countertops. Um, and you know, going to from Micah and, and anywhere that we could save, uh we did and to get the number we did. Megan's been doing just an absolute ton of work uh with this stuff. So I thank her for that. The fire on the green on Friday um was very close to jumping over to the old town hall, which is built in the mid eighteen hundreds, I believe. And it would have gone up in, in two seconds and, and would not have been savable if not for the great work. Of our fire department. Um, our fire marshal and building inspector responded. Uh, if you look at the. Old town hall in daylight, you see a massive white pine behind it. A branch had fallen off of that. Um, it made its way all the way to the transmission wire, believe it or not, through the wind. Um, and knocked a three-phase wire, which is a big main wire in town. And um it started a fire among other uh issues. The fire got very close to the um old town hall, so much so that smoke went up into the eaves and into the attic and uh that the town hall or that the old town hall needed to be uh. Blown out and you get, get the fresh air. Was that, the fire was that close. Uh, neither the chief nor assistant chief were on scene. And I don't say that in a negative way. I say that in a positive way in that. Their leadership, their training, their trust and confidence in their fire department to handle it in their absence was incredible. I couldn't be any happier uh with, with. The way everything went. Obviously, um I responded uh and the volunteers, the paid staff, um everyone did, did a fantastic job. I got a call from Eversource. Uh, while on scene uh to make sure we were okay, to clarify what, what the next steps were. Uh, so it was, it was just a, I, I compliment the chief and assistant chief in the, the, the way they've prepared and trained the, the staff to go there and respond. So. Uh, very happy with that. We are, the, the library media center that we uh got, that Megan had got us the grant money for uh was tested in an event recently, uh last week, I believe. Thirty people in the room, three hundred online, and it's working uh swimmingly. Uh, and we'll look to have a, a council meeting uh down there at some point. Uh, it says, talked before, the, the Little League wants to run our um snack bar, the cross farms. I have uh talked it over with Bruce. He's for it. Uh, we are for it as well. And if, you know, obviously it'd be um profitable for them. So those are something, some things that we'll be discussing. Uh, the tree lighting. Is, tree lighting and, and the, the parade are gonna be the same day. That's uh November thirtieth. Uh, at six P M, uh the parade will kick off. And then at six thirty, Santa will be on the steps or the front porch of the Hicksterns Museum to have kids come up and line up and, and uh sit on Santa's lap. Picture opportunity. Thank you to the Hicksterns Museum for uh cooperating with us. The fire department has built a handicap ramp so that people can get um from the sidewalk up onto the, the porch. Uh, to be with Santa Claus there and Hicksterns, they are gonna donate that ramp to Hicksterns to keep there for all their events or anything that happens there. Uh, they'll have access to go up there. Um, they're gonna, Hicksterns is gonna do everything to kinda make it look fantastic. Again, I think it's just a beautiful building and a beautiful spot. Uh, for Santa to come. We had a meeting today, a confidence meeting uh with pretty much all the involved parties, public safety, DPW, PCC. Um, and we're a good place to combine uh these events and we're moving forward with it uh on November thirtieth and I'm happy about that. Uh, as I might have mentioned earlier to some of you, our Kyle Sandness is our new senior center director. We'll have her in and she started today. I will have her in, in the coming months to meet uh with town council. You get to meet her in person is what uh we, obviously we all request. The, there was a repair in the um, the water line that was a, a while ago. They're back to normal operating uh features. Now, we are in a bit of a drought, but not being affected by that at this point. Uh, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Just one big follow-up question on the Parks Garage. You had mentioned like one month to spare. Is that, you're talking about the ARBO funding, using that, being under contract or whatever that is before the end of the year? Is that?
Yes.
Will we all sign for that, is all I'm asking?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just follow-up on the garage. Um, will we be able to get a timeline for the uh back garage available by like eighteenth? And that's when the next government is gonna be?
No. Not on the, not on when ground is gonna break.
Okay.
But certainly on when papers will be signed and, and when we're at least safe from ARBO. That's all. We all wanna get across that ARBO finish line and have it ready for, but we, we should. Uh, by the end of this month, be in, in a great spot. Thanks to Megan Masa uh to, to get that done.
Okay.
I just, if I missed it, I apologize. Is there any update on the sidewalk, something, you know, that, that's still?
I spoke with our attorney about it today. It's still in litigation. Um, there's some uh potential meeting coming up soon, not a uh legal meeting coming up, but nothing, nothing of, of substance.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the overview on how the voting process went. I agree that it's actually went very well, especially during about. Other towns that are having a little bit more struggle on the media. Due to the passage of the no excuse absentee ballot question. Absentee ballot, ballot question. I hear that there may be changes on how early voting is going to work. Because now there's more flexibility with absentee balloting. Obviously, that happened last week, so nothing has been decided, but I uh, I, I would ask that you continue to stay in touch with our registrars. Um, and possibly, you know, and through the clerk, the state on. What plans are coming for changes to the voting system now that the whole state's been through one round of this early voting. We're not alone in seeing a financial deficit from this process. And while I do think it's important, obviously, to fund it, I think there might be opportunities for us to see cost savings from, in comparison to this year. As the state makes policy decisions going forward. So just, please just keep that on your radar.
Thanks. I really should have mentioned me and Mr. Wyman and I today did discuss exactly that with the vote and, and. There, there are just many, many, many unknowns and we're in complete confidence in our state partners to keep us well-informed in, in these matters moving forward.
In terms of the animal control facility, I, I think it's great uh what you're doing in trying to legalize this. I think that's probably a good idea. Uh, and I would, I know I've said this before, but I would continue to say, um especially if we can get regional buy-in. It seems like a perfect opportunity to ask our legislative delegation for some financial bonding help.
Discuss today.
Okay. And I, I know, I think there might be more appeal if, it's not just talent, but there's multiple towns that.
Already been asked by, Wellington has reached out to the senator. Uh, we've talked to the state rep. Um, so yes, and that was a discussion today and how to pivot. Also. You know, the, the regionalization might not be as embraced um in other towns that is, as it is here uh with our council. Um, so they're, they're working through some of the political um hurdles that they have, um at least in one town for sure. Uh, but they all have to meet these state needs.
Sure.
Um, and at some point, they're all gonna need a new facility. And there is savings through, through CROG, a grant. Um, and Megan, the grant uh with CROG that Megan will get on the labor side of paying for uh. Salary seventy-five percent, fifty percent, and twenty-five percent in the first three years. They'll cover um. The cost of our animal control officers if we regionalize. So there's, there's strong incentive. The cost of building new facilities. We want it to be somewhat centrally located. We are, I believe, centrally located um compared to some of the other towns. Wellington might be a, a good compromise, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Thank you for keeping us informed about how that's going too. Great to hear. I will move on to item eleven, which is adoption of minutes. And we have minutes before us for the. October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Council Buckler. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Second by Council Mari. Is there any? Conversation, any questions? Issues, concerns with the minutes for those two meetings?
Some special meetings, that's only a week ago?
Yes, the twenty-ninth.
I sent you, you know, me, but I just wanted to put on the record and I heard from a couple of people that you did. A little very impressed with your leadership. Um, so. Multiple different people, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is that with no further questions? Alright, let's move them all back. So all those in favor of approving these minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item twelve, correspondence to council.
Yeah, so we actually have, we saved a few. Um. So a writer submitted an email regarding the question on the ballot um regarding pavement and regarding um the education shortfall. Another writer wrote in um regarding the renewal of her spot, which we're gonna prove a week later. Um, I got that email. And a writer wrote in, she was glad that the payment question passed, but she had concerns that in front of her driveway, they've torn apart and. DPW goes out and fixes it, but it just never seems to work. So I don't know, Brian, if you saw that email and you passed it on to Scott. Not before.
I think I did. Yeah.
You did, okay.
Yep.
Um, and then the last wrote, writer wrote in supporting the land question, but now it's been tabled. Um, can you support that? So the town.
Thank you. Item twelve, his chairperson report. Actually, before we go to that item, um I'd like to ask for a brief two-minute recess. So Jeff and Jeff? So we will recess for just a minute.
Yes.
The ice rink?
Yeah.
I, no, I know. We don't, I like it to have it up and ready. Ahead of time. Um, so there's not like an official date, uh but we're ready. The, the Crandleson is ready for it and the guys are gonna be faster now this year. It took a lot of people. But I don't know if you remember last year, they wanted to up and beyond with the, the benches and the grass, the, the turf and, um, but I want that ready to go. We'll look at the weather. Um.
Yeah, I mean, they're predicting a, sort of warm, but wet winter season this year, so we'll see what kind.
I feel like sun's gonna come get us, man, with this, this dry, great weather we've had. I feel like. Yeah, it's sun's a comin'. And we, in fact, we discussed that.
Brian, did you mute?
We just. Thanks.
Yeah, no, no, I don't.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My apologies.
It's okay. No problem. Uh, for those online, uh just to reiterate, I am making a motion to request to be excused from my duties as chair, which is. Essentially a resignation of chair of town town council. Uh, my job duties are now such that I don't feel like I can. Give the position of chair the time and effort it requires. So if there are no objections to my motion, uh which is a request to be excused from duties as chair. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
Promotions usually cause.
Yeah. If you think building a budget in Holland is hard. The state budget is. Exponentially more of a challenge. Uh, but if there are no objections to my motion, then we can accept that by acclamation. And amount of you.
Right.
I would make a motion now uh to fit uh, to nominate a slate of candidates for um town council leadership. Uh, Jacob Mari as chair and Chris Moran as vice chair.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Alright, I'll, I'll just say something. Um, this is, this is news to me. I'm, I'm happy to serve in that position. Um, that's the will of the council. But, that's all I have.
I'll just make a comment. That's fine, but I have been a leader a long time in this community. I was the highest vote winner. I just think that. It would make sense that I was vice chair, but I'm happy to be. I just told you that, you know.
Just a quick question on my part. Um, were you aware of this or is this kidding? Is this, you're getting this as well?
Sir, we, we have a second, so. Yeah, any other discussion? I guess you go, I think a roll call vote would be appropriate enough on this. Uh, Council Buckler?
Aye.
Oh. Council Shay?
Aye.
Uh, Council Stargarter?
Aye.
Uh, Council Gudecheck?
Aye.
Council Moran?
Aye.
I as well. Motion carries. Alright, um. So that, uh, I don't have a chairperson's report. Yeah. Perhaps for the next meeting. That is the meeting before Thanksgiving, so. Um, so I'll go to item fourteen, which is communications and petitions from council persons. Um, are there any communications and petitions from council persons? Council Moran?
Uh, just two things. One, I just wanna thank you, Megan. Um, we heard, you know, numerous times about, you know. How much you've helped us with grants and things like that. So um that saves the town a ton of money and I know you put in a ton of effort. So thank you so much for that. Um, and then the only other thing I'll say is um, looking forward to working with you, Jacob, and, and the rest of the counties. Thanks.
Other issues?
Yeah. So first, I just wanna congratulate all the scarecrow winners. Like, um, it was actually, I guess, twenty-five hundred people voted, which was incredible. So if you didn't see the winners.
More than.
Yeah, that's true.
So winners, if you haven't heard, I'll just say it though for the record. Beano Water, Tom, Little League, Blessed.
So winners, if you haven't heard, I'll just say it though, for the record, Beano Water, Tolland Little League Blessed, Sacred Parish, which they were all great. No, Genwell, and no Keepik in the creative one.
Uh, I think they're going to be picking a creative one, but they have to discuss it still, so they, it is to be determined.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so that was great, or something that was pulled up so quickly, Trish Handsound is awesome, um. Then I, Brian touched on it earlier, um, they could register its office for all there, and the town clerk too. Amazing job they did, did it two weeks, and I popped in the election day, because I was one that voted in person, say hi to Mike and Len and say thank you. That line was long, I don't know if you guys saw it, um, the same day voted. It was great, I, I noticed there's a lot of young kids.
Oh, yes.
So that was really, really exciting to see. Um, yesterday was Veterans Day, so I want to take a moment to thank all our veterans that served our country. So I also actually have a statement, which is kinda funny, it's a good. Statement next, so first, congratulations, Chris, so. You know, a lot just happened over the last six months, and I just feel it's time for me to make a statement, I spent hours of doing this professionally and everything, so. It's not to you, it's not to you, it's not to you, wait, oh, you have the chair.
Yeah.
You have the vice chair, I'm so confused, I keep referring to him as the chair.
It's not between.
Because remember, he's got a view. Yeah. Anyways, moving on, so after careful consideration, I have decided to switch my caucus affiliation. This decision is rooted in my belief in the principles of democracy, acceptance, respect, and ability to agree to disagree. It was not a decision made lightly, but required coverage and deep consideration. This does not mean the state changes to a Republican and only the caucus. Changing my caucus affiliation involved writing a formal letter to the town clerk as per the FOIA guidelines. This letter informed the town clerk of my decision, which was made by my rights as an unaffiliated voter and elected official under the FOIA. While I am not obligated to share this decision, I believe in transparency and thus I'm sharing with all of you. This budget season was the most challenging and mean spirited budget season I've ever seen and experienced. There were instances of personal tax, lack of respect for different opinions. This took an emotional toll on me and was exhausted, to the point it did mentally affect me, significantly affected my mental health. During the past budget season, I often found myself left out of the central caucus deliberations in preparation. I was singled out for not walking the political party line. I realized the need for a supportive group to discuss things, so it, and this need may navigate in those various perspectives presented in meetings challenged. I also was not kept, um, with things through town manager's office, so I was also left at another disadvantage. I would get something occasionally, but not all the time. This change will pave the way for a more open, inclusive conversation, where everyone's ideas are freely shared and respected. I am eager, engaged, and healthy debates, agreed to disagree, and share different perspectives, foster a more collaborative and respectful environment. I am optimistic about the future and look forward to better preparation for town council meetings and for a more productive budget season. I want to thank Vice Chair Murray, Council Shay, and Moran for their open-mindedness and acceptance of my decision to change my caucus affiliation. Your support and understanding have been invaluable to me during this transition. Lastly, civil servants are all dedicated to doing our best for our community. We are all neighbors and share the goal of improving our community. I want to reassure you of my deep commitment to this cause and my eagerness to work with this council and community that remained of my term. Because the truth about Colleen is that my commitment to our community remains unwavering, and I am dedicated to serving that community to the best of my abilities. Those two things to me. So, like I said, I didn't have to, but of course, I'm gonna say something, and if there's any questions, it is on town clerk, in the town clerk's file.
I have a point of parliamentary procedure. I believe that switching caucuses. Is not allowed per FOI.
No, this was confirmed by FOI, and the town clerk has this in the office. Because I am an unaffiliated. Or if you're independent, you can do that because you're not designated to a political party. It was confirmed, I think it's the director there.
So, who's the guy that came for the meeting?
I have the guy who came for our FOI training.
So we had an FOI training here, and.
Organized by the town.
Organized by the town, presented for the, um, all elected.
All elected, correct.
Um. And he explicitly told us that you midterm, not you specifically, but anyone's general can't change. And I think his word was flip-flop, from one, uh, caucus to another, because the state is an elected seat. As either a Republican or Democratic seat, regardless of what the affiliation of.
I can't go back to it, I mean, you can, town clerk agrees out this week, but it is on file and has been, um. Told by the FOIA director, whatever. It has been checked into, and this was months ago because it was terrible for me, you know, I'm sitting here by myself and I'm supposed to make a decision right away. And then between a new, I keep running chair, vice chair, and this, I mean, I think it's gotta be a very productive. Situation, I'm like, you like, unless you like me sitting by myself, which isn't fair either. So if you have any questions, I would recommend contacting the clerk's office. And, yeah, I think, yeah, I think I have a, no, I don't have a copy, Kathy has it. I would never do something I couldn't do, and then make a giant announcement about it. That makes no sense.
I think we just had a dark about whether or not it was allowed, we, just because we had the training and the training. Inform us, the trainer informs, it's not allowed to do, that we can't.
Yeah, but once you make, like, the switch, went to the town clerk, now the town clerk knows. That's it, and again, I know what you're saying, because it was confusing, it was double-checked and double-checked. And because if you're a U or an I, you can do that.
And that's all otherwise, but I mean. I don't know if that's something that can be confirmed by the town.
It is, the town clerk confirmed it, it's in the FOIA folder.
You all agree, if you want, if I can interject.
Just.
You all agree, I can have the town attorney just find an opinion, um, and, and render it on this topic.
Objection to looking into that again?
I don't mind, it's just, she went through, I think the town clerk's actually on to.
What's that cost?
Right.
And if it's that you don't want me to caucus and have a group, it makes everybody feel better, then I will continue to do everything on my own.
I don't have that opinion at all. Uh, I didn't know that the clerk had looked into this, she did that as a citizen switching, so I, I did not have a legal opinion in this in any way whatsoever. Um, but I, I really offer it, but, you know, I'm happy, whatever we all decide, um, you know, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think. As long as we have a, a decision from the FOIC, you know, some information from the FOIC, which it sounds like we do.
Yeah, we do, definitely, Chris. Yeah, too, you know, I, you know, I, I've been doing this for a long time, I don't do things, if I'm gonna make an announcement about it, it wasn't sure thing.
Yeah, I mean, so do that, if, if the FOIC is telling us that, or we can seek the FOIC, this is what it sounds like we have that.
And again, this was no decision made easily, it wasn't, it took me months and months. I mean, even when I found out months ago, I still didn't, I kept going back and forth, but what kept me coming back to it was, I need. A group to talk to things with budget stuff, you know, I mean, it's just, you do, it's such a big piece of our, what we do, and not just to be able to discuss things. But, yeah. I don't know, Brian, if, who's the assistant town clerk down there?
Barry?
If Barry can get it. It's, I know it is in the clerk's office.
I'm happy to look into whatever council directs me into. Or not.
My motion for a parliamentary question. I think that our town clerk is our town, our womanarian, and perhaps this question could be officially brought to her.
It is, she's the one that got the answer.
Yeah.
If, if we could, if we could be shared, if that answer could be shared with, uh, the council.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm just gonna be objection to that.
No, and she absolutely said that, um, and again, I didn't have to say anything. Um, according to the FOIA, I did not, I did not have to even say anything, but Kathy does have my letter and a letter from. And actually, even the guy's name, someone's.
She hasn't written, I guess, kind of confirmed, she has the FOIA, yep, um, that it can't, it, it cannot be undone now. Uh, she has that in the unit writing from.
Um, can that be forwarded to council? Alright, that'll be forwarded to council.
I just, I just like I said, I appreciate you coming forward with your concerns like that, and I do look forward to, to coaxing with you, um, and.
Yep. Yeah, it wasn't easy, it's very uncomfortable, but, um, for the sake of budget time. I think, sitting here by myself, while everybody's doing it, just, you know, shouldn't be the way it is, but it is. Um, but yeah, I'm sure Kathy can get that for you.
Yeah, I'll make sure this forwarded to the council, I don't see it. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and thank you, Council Gudcheck, for a complete service of the council. For the continuing to work with you, the remainder of your term. Sir? Are there any more communications or petitions from council persons? No, alright, that brings us to public participation. And in the jurisdiction of the town council, with a three-minute timing, that we can go to those in the room first. No, alright, I'm looking at my timer. Um, anybody?
Anthony, uh, Andy Powell, twenty-one, Clearwood Drive, I wanted to thank the work that the, uh, the registrars did. And also all the, uh, poll, uh, members did in terms of ensuring that we had a safe and effective, um, uh, election that took place. Uh, it was interesting to see, you know, us coming back with, uh, fifty-one percent or fifty-two percent of the people voting before election day. And knowing that we had the confidence in our system here, that everybody's votes got counted and everything was taken care of. It was disappointing that we didn't have a greater turnout, I think we were at eighty-three percent.
But those numbers are tilted, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, this is my three minutes.
There was mine.
I'm not, I'm used to having a limited time, so I'm sorry. Um, but I wanted to say thank you for the work that Mike Wyman and Len Bach did to ensure that we had the people, the procedures, and also the trust. Because we hear about the stuff going on across the rest of the United States, I don't care about that. I know that I can trust Mike, and I can trust Len to do the right job, and I think we had a good election. Things went well as a person at the polls, all of the people that came in were fair and considerate, didn't cause any problems. It was refreshing to be involved in the, uh, the election process, at least as a, a poll worker, so my congratulations to them, thank you.
Anybody online? Anyone in the room? Alright.
Sure, George Oars, Christian Game Room. Uh, as long as you're, thank you people, I'd like to thank all the people that voted earlier, I really appreciate that. I always vote on election day, I went up, there's plenty of room in a park, I got the first spot, passed the handicap, I walked in, walked out. So thank you all of you people that voted early.
Anybody online? In the room?
Robert McNamara, six Heritage Lane, Tolland. About a year ago, I voted, uh, for council and realized I didn't know anyone on the council. So I made a commitment to myself to try and come and, uh, watch some meetings, and it was a lot harder than I thought it would be. I watched some, I watched some by Zoom, and then I also watched some recorded meetings. And throughout that year period of time, I've never made a public comment. Um, but I would like to share three thoughts today. So first of all, I want to thank each and every council person. It was hard for me just to watch these meetings, I can't imagine what it's like to be in them. And then to prepare for them, and then to sort of read all the prep that goes into that. And my understanding is the job doesn't pay that well, so I tip my hat to you guys, and, and that's a, a real thank you. Second piece is, the council's halfway through its term. And it's been a bit of a bumpy ride. Um, but I think we need to be reasonable in expectations. This is the first time some of you folks have been on the council, this is the first time this council's worked together as a team. And if you look at the polarization in the country in an election year with two assassination attempts, you know. We had some pretty good headwinds, and if you look even locally, the battle between taxes and education, um, ended up in four votes in order to get a budget. So, I would ask you guys not to be too hard on yourselves and not to be too hard on each other, because it was a tough year one. And then third and last, um, I think it's fair as a voter. Um, from an expectation standpoint, to think year two will go better than year one. Most teams do better in the second year, once they get to know each other and know how to work better together. And I think that's a fair expectation for residents, and I think that's a decent role, um, for the council in year two. Um, I thank you for the time, and I wish everybody a really safe and relaxing holiday season.
Anybody online? Everybody's room? Sammy?
Sammy, I'm sixty-one, from the, I'm Connecticut. I was here to say. Uh, thanks for the town employee and thanks for all the volunteer, they worked on Friday night. And they had my power back as soon as possible. But as I came in, I'm just, there was a probe surprises. Nothing I can say, but I wish everybody the best. Thank you.
Anybody online? Anybody in the room? I mean.
Wait, I still have thirty seconds, what?
I'll give it another three.
No, sorry.
Yeah, go for it after anybody else.
Okay, there's nobody else, no.
There's nobody else. Um, the, the one thing I, I, I meet on other nights, and I don't get a chance to, uh, to interact as often as I used to with the, with the town staff. And I know she's retiring, um, and I wanted to thank, uh, the Wizard of Tolland, uh. For all her hard work and effort, um, the fact that we have a triple-A bond rating has been mostly on her back for many years. The fact that we're able to do the things that we can as a town in terms of effectively using our resources has been at least its responsibility for a long period of times. And we are extremely fortunate that she was here, uh, to be able to do the job that she did, to be able to take care of our resources. And last time I looked, I don't think there's been any bad press about Tolland and its finances in twenty years, yet we earn awards. Not because this group is great, but because she's done a fantastic job. And I want to say that in her, uh, time of coming forward and, uh, and retiring, uh, a well-earned retirement. Your efforts, your, your blood, sweat, and tears, uh, are greatly appreciated, and I think that, you know, it's unfortunate with the fights last year, but. the fact that you've done amazing work for us for a long time should not be forgotten, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Big, big one, so, thank you.
Anybody else for public participation? Once, twice. I'd say no more public participation, close it out for the night, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn. For a second? Any objection to adjournment? Objection or adjourn?